Good evening. Today is Monday, September 9th, 2024. Today is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. Pete Caston will not be here today. Unfortunately, he had a work trip, so I will be filling in for him. So we are going to motion to convene in the meeting. Have a motion. Motion Scott, second. Allison, all in favor? And we're going to convene into executive session to discuss personnel matters. We will return at 7:30. So can I get a motion to convene to executive session? Motion Scott, second. Allison, all in favor? Okay, we'll see you at 7:30. Thank you. Okay, good evening. Welcome back. We did open the meeting earlier. We went into executive session, so we are going to, a motion to convene executive session. Motion Scott, second.
Adjourn.
Allison, oh adjourn, sorry. Adjourn. Sorry, start over. We're going to adjourn executive session. Motion to adjourn executive session, Scott, second. Allison, all in favor? Okay, thank you. I was reading the wrong line. All right, so we're going to stand for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Well, welcome, everybody. We are going to start doing comments section. We're just going to switch a little bit of the order. We're going to start with Dr. Goodman's comments for the evening. Thank you.
First, I want to talk about the beginning of the school year, and I'm delighted to report that the initial days of the school year have been exceptionally successful. Our students arrived at school enthusiastic and prepared for learning. They really, something's very special about Tocco and our kids, and they all came in with smiles on their face. The dedication demonstrated by our teachers and administrators has been instrumental in the smooth transition. We proudly announce that our district fully encompasses, as I wrote in the happenings, a pre-K program now in Cottle, and now we educate students pre-K to 12th grade. The newly incorporated preschool in Cottle already shows promising integration with our academic framework, including a robust and comprehensive learning journey for our students from early childhood to high school now. Thank you for your continued support and commitment to the Tocco School District's academics. Now, as far as sports, the fall 2024 season is underway, with many of our teams kicking off their season this past week. Our varsity football team defeated Chester on Saturday by a score of 35-14, giving the team a first big win. Additionally, on Saturday, our boys soccer team defeated Mount Vernon, which is like, big deal, 2-1 for their first win of the season. The boys also defeated their league rival, Lethell, that afternoon. I think it was this afternoon, actually. Our varsity volleyball team defeated Alexander Hamilton 3-0 last Friday in their opener. Our newly formed JV boys soccer, our varsity girls soccer team, and our varsity girls tennis team opened up their seasons today. Results will be forthcoming. Modified fall sports began today. We look forward to seeing our middle school athletes competing in the coming weeks. Homecoming, mark your calendars, is set for September 26th through September 28th, and we'll have a full schedule as we do every year, including our parade and our new Tocco Day that we came up with a couple of years ago. So we hope to see everybody there. I also have some other comments to make. So as many, I choked up. As many of you might be aware, I made the decision to resign as superintendent of this great school district at the end of the academic school year, which is June 30th, 2025. This decision was not an easy decision, but after much reflection, I know that it's time to move forward. It has been really my absolute privilege to work alongside the incredible staff, and I must say, the Board of Education. Everybody who's been on the Board of Education since I started has been an inspiration to me. I also enjoyed working with the PTA, and as I've always said, Tocco has a very exceptional PTA, and the countless parents and students, and of course, the incredible staff that makes our community so special. I continually am continually impressed by the professionalism and dedication of our administrators, teachers, and staff. Their commitment to growing their skills and adapting to meet evolving needs of our students, as well as the changing times, is remarkable. Even with an already impressive repertoire, they continue to innovate and stay ahead of the curve to ensure every child receives the best education possible. As we embark on the 2024 school year together, every learner, every need. That is our tagline for this year. I am filled with optimism and determination. Let's work together to make this the best year yet for every learner in our school. I am confident that the Board of Education, along with the input and collaboration from our stakeholders, will find the right leader to build on the work we have started and guide our district to even greater heights. Thank you for your support over the years. I'm not leaving yet, so June 30th, and I look forward to making this final year one of progress and celebration for our entire community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Goodman. So we're going to move on to comments. This section in meetings, we are going to either comment or report on committees. Today, I'd like to just sort of go down. I'll start with the end of the table. Scott, with board comments, and I'll finish.
No, I just want to welcome everyone back to the start of the school year. You know, us as a board, this was the first time we heard of Amy resigning, and we were taken back. We were shocked. We just had to come out of an executive session. We talked about it, but we want to wish Amy the best, and we want to thank her for her time here at Tocco. You really did amazing things in the district since you've been here. Our ratings have climbed to the roof, the graduation of the students of the colleges our kids are going to, transformation of Cottle, you know, the facilities. You've done a great thing. We'd love for you to stay, but we want to thank you for doing what you've done for Tocco for the past, how many years? Six? Six. So thank you from the board.
Thank you, Scott. Allison?
Welcome back to school, everybody. Thank you to all the staff who worked so hard over the summer to get our schools ready for the students to come in, especially all the 12-month staff who are the busy bees of the district, making sure that everything is all set for the kids. Thank you. To Dr. Goodman, as you know, I'm very sorry to see you go. Thank you so much for all that you have done for our district, moving us forward. You've truly made an enormous impact. I appreciate, as a parent, your willingness to always listen, to always implement change and implement it quickly, and always in the best interest of the students, and I truly, truly believe that. As a board member, I have been so impressed with the way that you act quickly to requests that we have, and again, your implementation of your work and your dedication to the district. And I am so sorry to see you go and wish you luck.
Thank you, Allison. Therese?
I also want to wish everybody a very successful school year. Welcome everybody back. Looking forward to many great things and celebrations and continued growth throughout this year. Amy, I, or Dr. Goodman, I will accept your resignation tonight, and will do so with a very heavy heart on behalf of our district, because your leadership will be a true loss to our district, our children, the students, and the staff. And as a board member for now five years, I've watched you lead with grace and make very difficult decisions, always with the best interest of our students, their opportunity for learning, driving your every decision, no matter how difficult it has been to make. I want to sincerely thank you for your service and the exceptional job you have done under your tenure. You have raised the bar academically, more so than any leader in my time as a parent here, and I have a senior. And I can say that confidently. You have expanded electives for our high school students to have opportunities to learn on different subject matters that they did not have the opportunity before. You have increased our AP offerings. You have raised the bar for college application and therefore admission for our students. Our rankings have drastically improved under your leadership, and our average SAT scores are also higher than they were, which is also a significant accomplishment. Beyond your academic legacy, you have helped bridge communication with our community. You have created a much more positive school culture, which is what a strong leader can do. You've shown that. And you have expanded our athletic programs, bringing back cheerleading, offering lacrosse, which was always a big ask of the community, and other clubs and activities, which I can't sit here and list everything, mainly because I don't have the attention span. I'm kidding. But this has allowed our students to really have an opportunity for a well-rounded and comprehensive school experience, and we are forever grateful. This is truly our loss. I know that your next chapter in the next district you serve will benefit exponentially from your leadership, and I know that you have made Tocco a better place. I really wish you success in your next chapter, and I know you don't need it, as you will be. So it is our loss, but I'm going to accept it. I won't, I won't, not, okay? I'm not going to be able to do it anyway, so.
Thank you, Therese. So I will, I will, no, it's hard to follow that, Therese. Okay.
I did that while I was driving to work today.
So I liked, I mean, you know, you could sit and list all the accomplishments, and there are many. And so I came onto the board as we were doing a superintendent search, and Dr. Goodman, we were fortunate to find and to grow together as a board member and as a district. It has been my honor and really a pleasure to work with Dr. Goodman. She is, you know, aside all the accomplishments, a better, you know, a better field, a better building, a better curriculum, and just a better, more positive environment to work under. Her work ethic and her perseverance through COVID, I mean, we went through a lot. So it has been really such a tremendous experience for me personally and for the board, and we wish you nothing but success. We know, obviously, the next chapter will be a good one for you. And I look forward to the year ahead. I want to just reflect a little bit. We have a year, and every learner, every need.
Yes.
Yes. Our new strategic plan, we are going to, you know, plow ahead and we're going to stay very positive. We're going to forward. And Dr. Goodman has allowed us to transition very smoothly, because you will be here for the school year, so we appreciate that, too. And we just look forward to the year ahead, and we are sad to see you go, but we will make it a great year, a great ending. Okay, so, thank you. Okay, so we are now going to move on to comments by the business manager. Faith?
Good evening, board trustees and Tocco community. As we continue into the new school year, I'd like to provide a few key updates that are essential to our ongoing operations and planning. Over the summer, we successfully completed several small essential projects, including gym floor repairs, replacement of classroom flooring in 11 rooms, and painting of some classrooms. And these efforts have been instrumental in ensuring that our facilities are clean, safe, and fully prepared to support our educational programs. Regarding transportation, we've made some adjustments to stop times and bus routes based on recent input from local law enforcement. While these changes were necessary for the safety and efficiency of our routes, we recognize they have required some adjustments from families. We continue to prioritize safe and efficient transportation for all our students, and will monitor the routes closely to make any necessary refinements, and we thank the community for their patience. We are also working, we are also in the process of working closely with our architects on the next phase of planned work scheduled to take place next summer. This phase will focus on further improving our facilities and infrastructure, ensuring they continue to meet the needs of our students and staff. The fieldwork for our annual audit concluded in mid-August, providing a thorough review of our financial practices and compliance with all regulatory requirements. The audit committee will review the draft report at the end of September, with the board expected to adopt the final audit report and financial statements on October 15th. This timeline ensures a thorough review process, maintaining our commitment to financial transparency and accountability. We appreciate the diligence of our auditors and the cooperation of our staff in ensuring a smooth and efficient audit process. And I'd like to end by thanking Dr. Goodman, who is an amazing leader and an inspiration. Your leadership has had such a positive impact on the district. We are the team we are because of you, and everything you have done has been for the benefit of the students. And it's going to be sad to see you go, but I wish you well.
Thank you. Thank you, Faith. So now we're going to move on to comments by the PTA.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sue Warnes. I am the new president of the PTA, so I'm happy to be here for the first time with you.
Welcome.
First, I do want to also thank you. I also want to thank Dr. Goodman for your years of service. I just really felt that you navigated us through those tough COVID waters. I would hear from friends around the country and the struggles they were having and not knowing what was going on. You were always so communicative. You know, you didn't know what was happening week to week, but you just communicated what you knew, and you kept us up to date, and it was like we were all in it together. And I just really appreciated that and felt very lucky to be in this district. So, and obviously, all of the years after that, after we finally got a little bit more stable, you know, things have just been amazing. So I'm happy that I get to work with you for at least the year. But again, thank you for everything you've done, and yeah, best of luck. Hopefully, you have your own Instagram account, so you can show us all of your adventures. So just a few PTA highlights. We have our first executive board meeting tomorrow night, so we don't have a lot to report tonight. But as you know, our PTA is very involved, and so there has been a lot going on over the summer. We had a very successful welcome picnic the other day. We combined the pre-K and K families this year down at Cottle. Really great turnout. We handed out, even though PTA doesn't run homecoming, but I was able to kind of work with Beth Silvestri, with the Tocco Athletic Council, and Mr. Colasuno to get that flyer to the families, because I really want those young families to know that it's not just about the football game with the high schoolers that might be intimidating, but all of the other things going on that weekend with Tocco Day, and the homecoming parade is so adorable. So anyway, that was really great, and I feel like those families definitely felt embraced by the community. The welcoming committee is also launching a buddy program so that parents, new parents in the community, can be matched with existing parents, so that when you have those questions and you feel a little bad about emailing the teacher or the principal about it, you have somebody to reach out to. So we're really excited about that program. We were very happy to support the summertime events that took place at the school, the college workshop. All we really did was provide breakfast, but everybody seemed to be really happy about the breakfast that we did for that, as well as the superintendent's conference day a couple of weeks ago. Another thing I wanted to mention that we're really excited about with the PTA, the grants committee. We started it last year. I'm sure Peggy must have told you a little bit about it and the great things we're able to do. But, you know, really fun things, like a butterfly pavilion for the first grade, where they release the butterflies, this Play With Me communications boards, which actually allowed kids who have limited communication, verbal communication, to have some playground socialization. And also for the theater club, we were able to provide costumes and microphones, and that Cottle performance of Matilda was so great. And it was great, because you really could hear them because of those microphones. So those are some of the things that the PTA Grants Committee is able to do, things that the teachers may not be able to fund, and so they're coming to us. We have our, we have two rounds of funding coming up. We'll do a fall and a spring. The fall application deadline is October 1st, and there is a flyer that I'm not sure if it was sent out to the teachers yet, but if not, it will be, so that they can submit their requests for a review. Let's see, a couple of other quick things. Dance, of course, is in the works. The schedule is all being worked out. That should be underway and starting early October, if not late September. We have Girls on the Run back again at Cottle, which has been successful the last few years. Our Halloween party is October 25th, a Friday night. And it's a long way off, but not too long, because I want everybody to know we have a spring social date already. It's Friday, May 2nd, at the Bronxville Field Club. So definitely mark your calendars. And finally, I do want to also say that I'm very happy for the partnership that the PTA does have with the Board of Education. So not only do I hope to see you at the spring social, but if you could, if you haven't already, your membership is $15, or 30 for the family, very low cost. But obviously, that foundation of funding is what allows us to do everything. And it does show, when people see that your names are among the roster of members, just kind of, you know, shows the solidification of the partnership. So that's it from me. I'm just going to listen and learn, and I'm happy to be here, so thank you.
Great. Thank you, Susan. That's great. Susan, do you want to mention what people may be watching at home? Do you get, is there a website for people for membership?
Oh, for membership, it's actually, it's tucco.givbacks.com. But if you go to, there is on the, on the Tocco website, there's a PTA, like a hub for PTA. And so in case it's not exactly that, GiveBacks, but it's something like that, but they can find it there.
That'll be helpful. Great. Thank you so much. You guys are doing great, great programming. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to first recognition of the audience. This is on agenda-related items, so you can come up to the microphone. Feel free to come up to the podium. Name, address, you have three minutes, and, you know, comments. There will be no discussion, but we're welcome to, you know, we're welcome to hear your comments, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Susan. Hi, guys. I'm Susan Mealy. I live in Chester Heights. Dr. Goodman. The only consolation I have about your departure is that my kids will be done with the district when you leave, so thank you for waiting that long. But this is such a loss. And in addition to all the tributes everybody else already made, I think it's important to note, correct me if I have my timeline wrong, but I think when COVID hit, it was like mid-March, I think you started your job in January, like eight weeks prior, and suddenly, boom, you were thrown into this COVID fire, and you captained us through the most turbulent waters ever. When I was PTA president soon after, and I got a call from my counterpart in East Chester, "How are you guys doing it? Our school is floundering." Somehow, you have this uncanny ability to know exactly what needs to be done at all times. If there's a challenge, you know what to do. You, and all these things everybody's describing. Other people might have said, "Yeah, let's have lacrosse," or "Let's have whatever." You figure out how. You just get it done. And were it not for you, we would not have such a PTA presence in the middle school and high school. Because of you, we now have a lot more going on than we ever did before, and we're really appreciative of that as well. This, to me, is a huge, huge loss, but you have brought us so far that I could only hope that we now have what we need to move forward without you, but you will absolutely be missed, and by me personally, but by the whole community, really. Thank you so much for your service. But I know you're still here another year. I just, you know, we're all being maudlin, so I'm just jumping on that bandwagon. But looking forward to the strategic planning process, and it feels like that's well timed now. Is that a this-year thing?
Yes.
Do we know when we're starting needs assessment stuff? Is that like?
Well, we have, so we're going to launch from our strategic plan. We have a shell of it, so we want people to come in. We want different stakeholders to talk about, like, where they think we are and what else we have to work on, because the year started, so we can't have a whole year to plan, because we need to take from our last year's plan and see where we're going. But we changed it a little bit, you know, just working on it, and then we want to bring stakeholders together. We also want to do a portrait of a graduate. So we all think about, what do we want a graduate from Tocco to look like? And then everything we do should be focused on that.
Great. And I'm sorry, just one last thing, is another thing that I almost didn't mention, is how fantastic you are about giving credit to everyone. You know, you bolster the teachers, you bolster the staff. Everybody feels good, I think, I would hope. When I see you and hear you give remarks, it's always crediting everybody who's contributed to something. And that's what a leader does, and I think you've done such a great job across the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Cynthia Tate, 87 Middle Road. Those of you who know, I don't know, I do not like coming up here and speaking, but I felt like I just really needed to, and I'm going to try to compose myself. So being a, let's see, I'm a community member, a parent, former board member. I had the distinct pleasure of working with Ms. Goodman from her entire time here. And to watch her was definitely an amazing thing, and everything everyone says is so, so true. But what I would like to just mention is, as an educator, it is, it's very hard and rare to find someone like Ms. Goodman, Dr. Goodman. She has so much knowledge and expertise everywhere, and like so many people said, she just gets it done. And you're right, that is what a true leader does, and it is an absolute major loss to this district. But like you said, you got us to this point, and I only pray, and I will be watching from the outside, and I will be watching all this year to see the other amazing things you do, but I only hope that, well, this board will get someone who will follow in your footsteps, and more amazing things will happen. But you truly are the best of the best. And I just hope all of you out there know just what we had and how amazing things are. It really is a testament to you. So thank you, and you will be truly missed, but I wish you the best in your next chapter.
Thank you, Cynthia. Is it agenda item? No, so we have a second after, yeah, after our business, and then, so you're welcome to come up then. Anyone else? No. Okay. Oh, yeah, sure. Sure, just name and address.
Good evening. My name is Bill Ferrone, and my family and I live over on 12 Deerfield. Congratulations. Good luck, and you guys have a job ahead of you now. I have one request, or one question, I guess, and if the information's available, just tell me, and I'll go dig it out. I'm just curious to find out, what's the grade enrollment for each one of the 12 or 13 years, including kindergarten? Is that someplace I can find it, or?
I don't think you can find it, but I'm sure that we have it. You could contact Faith Spark's office, and business office definitely has that.
It was presented on the slide.
It was presented on the slide.
Yeah, we do have that information.
Well, actually, if you looked at last year's budget presentation, it is on there.
It's on the slide there, but there's.
Well, that was projected. What about?
Oh, current versus projected, is that what you're? Do we, I don't know if we have that information, or if we could.
Foil request.
Oh, it's a foil request, okay. You could also go on, I'm sure you can go on to a previous board where we did discuss that. I don't know, we don't put the numbers forward on the website, no?
They're not on our website. They're in the budget presentation.
Okay, so budget presentations, you could go on to. Yeah, or foil requests.
And last year's budget presentation is on, go to our website.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
The budget, okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Okay. All right, these class. Okay, so we're going to move on to consent agenda. Sorry. God, this is going to recognize the board. Okay. So a motion to approve consent agenda items 2 through 4. Do I have a motion? Therese, second. Scott? Discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, business of the board. So we're going to adopt a district-wide safety plan. Resolve that the Board of Education of Tocco Union Free School District hereby adopts the district-wide safety plan for the 2024-25 school year. Do I have a motion? Allison, second. Therese, discussion?
Want to mention anything about this? Faith, or? No?
Okay.
The state had revised the language. The state revised the language for the district's safety plan prior, excuse me, subsequent to our 30-day comment period by the community. So we had to just update the plan with that required language.
Okay, because it was on a previous, that's what the, okay.
Correct.
We already approved it. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Rob. Appreciate that. All in favor? Okay. Adopt district building-level safety plans. Did I just do that, or is that?
That's the next one.
Okay. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tocco Union Free School District hereby adopts the district building-level safety plans for the William E. Cottle School, Tocco Middle School, and Tocco High School for the 24-25 school year, effective September 1st, 2024. Do I have a motion? Scott, second. Allison, discussion? All in favor? Approve an amendment to an agreement. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Tocco Union Free School District hereby approves the addendum to the superintendent's contract dated September 5th, 2024, authorizes the Board Vice President to execute said addendum, and authorizes payment thereunder. Do I have a motion? Therese, second. Allison, discussion?
Yeah, so I just want to let the community know that this is something the board, we agreed to, based upon Amy's stellar evaluation over the summer. We agreed to do this amendment with the notion that Amy was staying for the year. So even though she's leaving, we're still giving, we're still doing this amendment to her agreement. Secondly, Amy also, quote-unquote, "did the right thing" by the district. Not many people know, but technically, Amy could have gave 90 days' notice, and we would be stranded here without a superintendent for a year, or six months, rather. So Amy gave us ample time, and I want to thank you for morally and ethically being the person that you are, for. the person that you are, for doing that, to give the district enough time to start a proper search tomorrow for, for a replacement that will hopefully, pray, be like you. So we agreed as a board before that this is something that we, we stand by as a board, and I'm going to speak on behalf of Pete, too, as well as that here, so thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor? Approve an MOA. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tocco Union Free School District hereby approves the memorandum of agreement dated September 4th, 2024, by and between the district and the Tocco Teachers Association, as attached to the official minutes of this meeting, and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Do I have a motion? Allison, second. Teraz? Discussion?
Well, I just would like to say, we, we clapped some clubs, we made some new clubs, it's all budget-neutral, but we look at what's best for the students, and maybe we can serve them, and what clubs people, kids go to, and what they might be interested in. We look at the attendance and all of that, so we need some changes this year.
I just want to.
But it didn't go with the addendum of the teacher's contract, so we have to
Right.
approve that.
I just want to say that these additions are exactly what we talk about when, when, specifically when I say how you listen to what the community wants. The additions that you put in here are something that are truly needed, and I'm so happy to see them be put into place. People are going to be very excited about them. Thank you.
Right, and a lot of this was, like Allison said, from parents, the community talking about what clubs we need the students, you know, and what clubs we have overlapping or that, there's not great attendance, and especially, I know the Spanish Honor Society was a big one.
It was a big one.
And that, we received many emails on, and it's, it's you listening to the community, which is great. Thank you.
And I want to say again, as a team member, and I want to thank Andy Calaswano, and the high school principal, and other assistant principal in getting this done.
Comments? All in favor? Personnel recommendations. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Tocco Union Free School District hereby recognizes that Kristin Clokey has earned tenure in the special education tenure area as of August 31st, 2024. Do I have a motion? Teraz, second. Allison? Discussion? Comments? All in favor? Personnel recommendations. Resolve that the Board of Education approves personnel recommendations A through L. Do I have a motion? Teraz, second. Scott? Discussion? I really want to cross one of them out. All in favor? Strike. All in favor? Okay. And that leads us, lots of clubs, lots of clubs. That's great. Second recognition of the audience. So this is where, feel free to come up to the podium, name and address.
Non-agenda.
What?
Right, for the non-agenda items.
Yes, for non-agenda items, yes. So whoever wants to come up can do so.
Karen Bartley, Five Hill Top Road. I think you guys have this in email, many of the details of which are relatively personal, but I did miss the deadline for being eligible for my son to take a bus to his, the school he goes to inward for his learning differences. I submitted a document to the Supreme Court of Westchester County demonstrating that that was not my address at the time, nor was it my son's. He did not receive services for the bus during that period.